Good evening, it's seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Take the roll, please.
Commissioner Brink.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Steeler.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Chair Gerard.
Here.
We're asking for your able, please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the Constitution, and to the Constitution of the Constitution, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Chair is looking, look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
Move to approve as, as is.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, it's a non-debatable motion, all those in favor signaled by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. It includes one item, A, the planning commission meeting minutes from August 9th, 2023.
I'll make the motion to approve it, sir.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signaled by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We're up to our regular agenda. It'll be a public carrying for Forest Lake Apartments, Headwaters Village, PID 29-032-21-12-0017, Cooper's Incorporated. The way this will work, and there is going to be a number of recommendations when we are all finished with this, and we'll come back to that when we're finished. The way this will work tonight with the public carrying is that the city staff will present the application as they understand it. When they're finished, the commissioners will ask any clarification questions. After that, we will invite the applicant if they would like to say a few more words, or we may have a few questions for them. After that, we will have the public carrying and we'll have further instructions at that time. After the public carrying closes, it'll come back to the planning commission for decisions. So with that, Ken, are you presenting?
I am, Mr. Chair, thank you. As you introduced, we have before you this evening a request for several approvals for a 71-unit apartment building in the Headwaters Village PUD. These include a PUD amendment for the site, a zoning ordinance map amendment to change the zoning of the property from neighborhood commercial to general mixed use, final plat approval for replating the property, final PUD approval, and site plan approval. Commission may recall back in May of this year, you and it turns out the city council reviewed a concept plan for the site. The site is on the screen, near, just north of Headwaters Parkway, and Fitzgerald Trail, and Headwaters Boulevard. The concept plan you saw earlier this year showed an 82-unit building on the site. Both the commission and council reviewed it, provided some comments to the developers and to staff, including questions about the lack of commercial development in the Headwaters PUD. So, for a little more detail, this is a survey of the property, again, it's a vacant property. The vet clinic is here, there are apartments across this side of Fitzgerald, or excuse me, Headwaters Boulevard, Bell Bank is down in this corner, and then again, Headwaters Parkway to the south. The, so in the report, there's a whole bunch of stuff here that I will try not to read all of it to you, but start with the comprehensive plan. The comp plan has guided this property for mixed-use development, and as we have found throughout the city, mixed use does allow for a mix of uses, both commercial and residential. Multi-family densities are supposed to be 10 to 15 units per acre, and the mixed-use districts require at least 50% residential development to occur within those. Switch off to a map of the project. So this is, go into the project plans. And, put a site plan on, so again, that's the property survey. And here's a site plan, so we speak a little more clearly of what we're talking about. Again, 72-unit, 71-unit, excuse me, apartment building here, a drive coming in from the Bell Bank Drive. Primary driveway would be here on Headwaters Boulevard. The building, the first floor is a drive-through parking facility, comes out on this end, and then three levels of residential above it. These are some images that the applicant had put together in a PowerPoint. Again, the entrance from the Bell Bank on this end, going into the lowest, lower level, lowest level, it's not really underground, but it's the lowest level, under the building, comes out on this side. Again, their outdoor amenity area. In this corner of the property, the vet clinic is back here behind the building, and again, the primary entrance into the parking lot here, for reference. So that, for context, tells you a little more about the project itself. In this case, again, 72 units there per 71 units, I keep saying that. Proposed for the site comes out to 22.5 units per acre, which is above the 10 to 15 units that we outline in the comp plan and in our code for this mixed-use district. However, there is language in the code that says the city may allow for an increase of residential densities. When the applicant shows such increases will not have undue or adverse impacts on the neighbors, or on the city, or on public facilities, and if they are compensating this by having additional amenities and increased efficiencies in the public facilities. And in this case, they are proposing their outdoor amenities, playground, pool area. There is a meeting room and a common room, workout facilities within the building that are proposed to meet that standard that the city has. The site, as I think the commission is well aware, is near the YMCA. We'll go back to this map. The county facilities are here, YMCA is down on this end, the transit center, if it's ever used again, is up on this end. So there are public amenities nearby that has great access for transportation, for vehicle, motor vehicle transportation, with Headwaters Parkway, Highway 61, and not putting traffic from a fairly dense development through a single-family neighborhood is another benefit to the site. The PUD, PUD for Headwaters Village, let me find that image, originally showed this site for commercial development. And there's another map of the area. Again, aerial photo zooming in, or on this area. The original PUD from 2006, and we're in this area, did show a commercial development occurring in this site, as with some of the other sites in this part of the PUD. And now, 20-some, almost 20 years later, it's worked out that commercial development just hasn't progressed there for probably a number of reasons, and the applicant, and Mr. Pratt can probably speak to that better than I. But the market, what I do understand is the market demand has not been there yet for, say, retail or grocery store or something like that. They, what we here as a staff is we need more rooftops, we need more residents to support more commercial development. And the, again, the retail scope, there's, retail development in general, the last five years has changed so much that I don't foresee it happening in this area anytime soon, in my opinion. So with all that said, the PUD needs to be changed to allow for residential development here because it was planned for commercial. The zoning map as well, is planned this site, or zoned this site for neighborhood commercial, which would be consistent with the commercial designation in the PUD. However, this comprehensive plan, which really overrides all of this, is planned this for mixed use, which would allow the commercial, but to have residential, you also need to have the zoning in line. So the applicant has requested a change to our MU2, our general mixed-use zoning district, which would be consistent with the comp plan designation. So, the other part of the PUD documents talks about creating a neighborhood heart, our neighborhood heart. Again, the village core was in this area in the PUD from 2006, which showed a variety of uses outlined here, some of which, of course, the county center and the YMCA came through. Other facilities, not so much, and there's been changes. And this is another site that's part of that, that would be in this location here. The property right now, is, we'll go back to our survey, is platted, was platted as an outlot. And outlots, for those who don't know, are not buildable parcels. They're created as kind of a, what I would call, holding designation for a property. The tax people, property owners know, as an outlot, they're not buildable, so they are taxed at a lower rate. And it's used as really a holding designation, instead of calling it a lot and block, until such time as a development is ready to go. And so in this case, the applicants have asked to change that outlot to a lot and block by doing a final plat. They are not proposing to change the shape of the property or anything with the boundaries of the property. It's really a designation change. And this shows the final plat, here's the underlying outlot designation. Now it will be Lot 1, Block 1 of Headwaters Fourth Edition, if approved. So it's, it's really just a technical step that has to be done to change that designation. They are not proposing any new public infrastructure. The streets are in, sidewalks are in, utilities are in. They'll be extending those within their site, but there's no street construction needed, no utility construction needed, other than the typical extensions that would need to go into the site. But because they are planting the property, the city code requires developers to make a park dedication of either land or cash equivalent. And in this case, we're not requesting land dedication. And we've outlined on page four of our report, which is page 12 in the packet, the recommended park dedication amount. In this case, the fee would be $161,554.50, based on the value of the property and the acreage. So that is one thing that happens. Outlots typically don't pay a park dedication fee, again, until they're planted for final plat. Back to... Back to the project plan. So there's several elements that we look at. The, of course, the site plan, the setbacks, the, open up the elevations. This will take a little bit of time to load. We look at the visual interest in the building materials. Again, this is slow to load, but it'll come. The lower level, again, the parking is on this level. Three stories of residential above with a mix of units of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, maybe some, are there threes in this, Steve? Okay. At market rate, they are not subsidized in any way. And I'll let the applicant talk more about it. But, I wish this would load, but you can see there is a mix of materials, mix of elevations, a mix of elements with a hip roof and these gable ends. Bottom line, it meets all our design criteria for finishes and style, and does not have restricted materials. It meets all our setback requirements. They have enough parking with the first floor, lower level parking, plus the parking lot parking, meet our code standards. There are some changes that we're recommending to the parking lot layout itself, as far as the spaces and the design of the drive aisles. This one. Some of the parking spaces are only 18 feet deep, and code usually requires 20 feet, but there are, there is room to maybe narrow up the drive aisle a little bit, to allow more overhang to the sidewalk. We don't want a large vehicle blocking a sidewalk. However, we also need to make sure that the fire department can get their trucks in, and that'll be some final design tweaks that will have to happen to make sure that turning radiuses work and the parking lot layout works. But I am not concerned about that, it's pretty common. The landscape plan was submitted with tree planting. Many trees proposed, which is good, unfortunately. No, we don't have it on this set. Many of the tree locations were proposed in areas, say, along here or in the public right-of-way along the two streets, where the city typically does not allow them. So we're, have a condition that the applicant revised the landscape tree planting plan for staff approval. We'll need a final lighting plan. Preliminary one looked like it meets all our standards, but again, that's something we check. They are proposing one monument sign out near their main entrance here. That will have to go through the usual permitting review process. We had various departments provide us review comments, including our city engineer. He pointed out the landscape, the conflicts with the underground utilities and our right-of-ways. The fire chief provided comments about, again, making sure the fire trucks can get in. He is also requesting that the applicants add what I would call a service door or man door on each end of the lower level here to allow easy access for firefighters to get into the garage if need be, rather than prying up the overhead door. And that also, he explained to me, that provides quicker access and also doesn't require the firefighters to go in through, say, the main doors and block that potentially as an escape route. They'd rather just go right into the garage and not have to go through the building to get into the garage. So that's why that is a requirement. The Rice Creek Watershed District has been reviewing the project. I don't believe this has gotten its permit yet, but it's in process. We had a neighborhood meeting two weeks ago tonight here. Well, we advertised one, we didn't have anyone come, but we held it for an hour and waited, talked, but that's fine. We have not received any comments about the project for many of the neighbors, pro or con. Overall, it's staff's opinion, this meets the findings that's required by the city for the comprehensive plan amendment, the zoning map change, the final PUD and final plats, and with conditions, all our, the site and design requirements of the city. So starting on page 16, which is page eight of the report, we have five different recommendations for you to consider this evening. We're recommending approval of the proposed PUD amendment to change the designation of this site to the general mixed use in the PUD. Secondly, we recommend approval of the zoning ordinance map amendment for the site, again, to change that to our mixed-use zoning designation. Third recommendation is to, to the city council, recommend approval of the proposed final plat. It's subject to four conditions in the report. We're also recommending approval, planning commission recommend approval of the final PUD plan for Headwaters Fourth Edition, again, for this site. And lastly, we're recommending approval of the project site and building plans, subject to 24 conditions outlined in the report. With that, I will stop. The applicants are here to answer questions, and I will take yours as well, thanks.
Questions?
Typically, when we do a PUD application and we, you know, we're providing a developer significant benefits, we ask for some city benefits in return. What would those be in this case, please?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I think the biggest benefit to the city is they are providing many of their own amenities on-site that will lessen the demand of, the public's need for park or other amenities that will be off-site. Other than that, I don't necessarily think there's a particular one, but the, that's the one thing that jumps out to me at this point.
Those are a benefit to developer because they're marketing and they, you know, keep the market rate, you know, desire to rent those out high. I don't see those as a public benefit. Okay. Do you know what the, these, none of these will be affordable, they're all market rate. I'll ask the price points later. It says in the report that most of the Headwaters core has developed in a non-residential fashion. Could you help me understand that, please? I kind of thought that most of the core is now apartment buildings. School has a small amount, but you've got the residential memory center.
Go ahead, Abby.
Sure. So when looking at the village core, it's also encompassing the area that the land, that the YMCA is on, the county service center, the park and rides. So the village core encompasses quite a bit of non-residential uses. While they may not be commercial uses, they are not residential uses. So it's helping balance out some of those residential uses in there.
And that was the function of the village core, was to concentrate the non-residential things, the amenities that this whole Headwaters development was going to need, especially now that there are more apartment buildings than we had envisioned. That, I've said before, the amenities are few and far between north of, pardon me, south of 97 and east of Lake. And as this is going to be the major growth area for our community, losing a commercial opportunity that is not impinging on a residential or industrial area is disappointing. And then, I thought in your report, you had a value for the parkland dedication. But now I'm looking at the conditions, and it says that that may change when the applicant gives a fair market information on the fair market value. And will that fair market value be based on the outlot status, which is a lower value, especially for taxes status, or the developable potential of the property?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that, that's something we'll have to figure out with the applicant. The number woods in the report was based on the current value, as I understand it from looking at property tax records, current. But we can't project a value, say, for 2024, if suddenly the value jumps because now there's an approved development. It has to be the value, current value, as of today, or date of application. So yes, the value will probably go up, but that's because they get an approved plan. It's, we can't take that future value and use that as the calculator, calculated value, or the value for calculating the park dedication fee.
So is the park dedication dollars what's in the report? As park dedication dollars, or is it to be determined?
That is our starting point. If we get information that shows that it should be higher, we will use the higher number. We haven't gotten the final, any of the final information from the applicant yet.
Would it go lower?
It could.
Other questions? I have a couple. Normally in the packet, we get the mix of apartments, how many studios, one bedroom, two bedroom, three. And I kind of lost count, so I was wondering if you had that. And so follow on that is, do all of the apartments meet our minimum standards for that type of, square foot standards?
Their project narrative had it, I didn't, it's my copy of the narrative, I could find it.
I know it said there was a mix, but I didn't get a, I know I saw two three-bedrooms, which Commissioner Young will be happy that some three-bedrooms are there, but...
Try and be a family and find a place to rent in this town. I dare you.
In any town.
But if you give me a minute, Mr. Chair, I will find it. I know we haven't.
Abby, can I trouble you for a moment? My screen blanked out completely on my computer. I don't know what happened, but I have zero.
Hit, hit the on button again, mine did the same thing.
No, I mean that, I've lost all the documents. It's there, but it whitewashed everything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, to answer your question, I put their narrative up on the screen.
And they all meet our standards?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you don't know what the mix is, I can ask the applicant that, though, that's fine. My last question is, to the best of my knowledge, this will be the first pool in an apartment?
No, the ones off of 11th have pools. Yeah.
Does it? All right. Well, I'm still going to ask my question, though.
I'm sorry.
Is there a special, besides having to put a fence on, which everyone asks, is there other special requirements for pools? I noticed right next to it's the playground structure, you know, makes guys like me nervous.
Not from the city, no. I'm sure their insurance company will have all sorts of requirements.
Okay.
Yeah. If you go on the bike path, you can...
That would be exercise, hold on. Other questions today, applicant, or I'm sorry, the city? Would the applicant like to add a few words? We asked, just for the record, you state your name and address.
Hi, Steve Keapers with Keapers Construction. My address, 12006 Scenic River Drive, Baxter, Minnesota. Ken, can you pull that back up, which, the letter that you just had?
Yeah.
And then, do you have the next page? Do you have the summary?
No.
Just scroll down.
No, I only PDF'd the one page, I'm sorry.
You're going to make me do the unit mix off of memory. It's two three-bedroom, two bath units. It says they're in the letter, they're, they're bigger than the average starting home used to be. They're just shy of 1,400 square feet. There is one efficiency unit, and then...
So the bulk are...
I want to say it's 26 one-bedroom, one-bath, and then the rest are all two-bedroom, two-bath. I'm off maybe by one or two on the one and two mix.
I won't remember tomorrow, so, oh man, I'm just trying to see what the mix is.
One of the comments that came up when Len was here and he'd kind of pushed the complaint, or the, just the comprehensive idea, was there was a comment about three bedrooms. And so, we had looked at the site, and we ended up having to kind of redesign the building to fit this site. The way the streets have been laid out, the way the curb cut worked, it's a really odd-shaped site. And so, when we did that, we ended up with a different shaped building than what we've done in the past. This is going to end up being, we've got some, we've developed somewhere over north of, maybe, I know, the number changes. We, well in excess of 3,000 units in the last 10 years, and this building was a unique one. It's very similar to many that we've done, but it was a unique one, just in the layout, and it actually lent itself the ability to do three-bedroom units. And so we were able to put some three bedrooms into it. You know, rental-wise, yes, it's a market rate project, but it's not pushing the envelope of some of your higher-end luxury units. I mean, we're looking at rents right now that are starting at the 1,195 range, up to not exceeding 2,000 at this point in the performing. Ken talked about common amenities. Inside the building, we've got a big community room. We've got an office, an office for an onsite manager that's going to be there. We've got a pretty good-sized exercise room. We've also got a business office, some storage. We've got bike storage, we've got car washing, pet We've got car washing, pet washing areas downstairs. Outside, we've got the swimming pool and then we've got the playground. We've done this kind of swimming pool playground configuration a couple of times before. It's worked out pretty nice. There's rules on fence sizes. The state of Minnesota's got lots of rules on how the pools get done. There's rules on access into them. You have to have digital access that's, you know, limited to the residents of the property getting in and out. What else was kind of brought up in passing? Ken talked about a parking. Yes, we're pushing the density, but we were able to make all the height restrictions. We were able to make all the setbacks. We were able to make all the parking requirements. We've talked to Bell Bank extensively about sharing that drive. The idea would be is actually, and Ken, not to correct you, but it's a little bit backwards where you're presenting it. The idea would be the entrance into the building would be on the north side with the exit then being on the south side, going out where the bank drive-through comes through. Central air in all the units. I don't have questions for me. I could just sit and ramble.
In the past, when we've allowed shared driveways, we needed signed agreements.
Yeah, we're working on it.
That are part of the deeds that...the Washington, I'm sorry. The Washington County restrictions, deed restrictions on both properties.
Yep, we're working on that right now, actually, with them. And when you guys approved the bank way back in the day, you got...I say you guys, meaning the city. I don't want to assume that all of you guys were here at that time, but there was actually, that access was put into that agreement. It never actually got attached to the title, which we've been working with those guys on and pretty much have come to an agreement and that'll get filed when we actually plat the property. And it doesn't include just the access, shared access. It also includes the shared maintenance and, you know, expense of, you know, keeping up the parking lot, the drive, snow plowing, that kind of stuff. City has been really picky about a few things. Ken has hung up on where we planted trees. We're changing some locations on trees because it's in utility easements, but we do like a healthy landscaping plan. There's some extra street lighting that they wanted us to do. We're amenable to that. And then I think redoing a crosswalk, it was one of the little later ones that you guys slipped in to make something ADA compliant. So I don't know if that got missed back when it got built or... And then the park fees, we use the park fees based on the actual purchase agreement sale price right now with Mr. Pratt. It works out to just shy 8,500 bucks a unit. If you guys want to cross-check that against the appraisal when it finally comes in, that's fine. I don't expect it to change a whole heck of a lot from that.
What is your plan for maintaining whatever landscaping is in there? There were a lot of promises made about the landscaping on, for instance, Headwaters Parkway, and it looks pretty bad. How are you planning on making sure that whatever landscaping you're putting in there is well-maintained and is irrigated, et cetera?
Well, probably the biggest difference between that scenario and this scenario is this is privately owned and is privately held, so you've got pretty big pride of ownership going on as far as keeping the place up. I mean, there's competition all throughout Washington County for multifamily, so, you know, and running and owning these things, you know, you want them to look as good as you can. So you're not going to spend that kind of investment, like say up on the north corner with the pool and the playground area, which is in excess of a half a million dollars and then turn around and not cut the line on the, you know, the other side of it. So we stay up on it and you're not going to, on a project of this size and that kind of investment, you're really not going to see anybody not do that. And ultimately, there's different, you know, the city can come and yell at you for, you know, depending on how you're keeping it up. I'm sure you guys have got some kind of landscape ordinances.
We don't have any inspectors.
But yeah, no, the easiest answer is it's, you know, it's too big of an investment to let it look like. I mean, and you can see it with like how Bell Bank takes care of the bank building and how the building takes care of that, so same thing applies.
Thank you.
Couple of us were discussing parking lot, or the underground parking.
Yeah.
At level ground. It seems that it's all at, for like a better term, street level. Usually it drops a few feet to kind of hide it a little better. Is there a reason that it's fully built up?
Didn't really work on that site between the water tables and the way the, just with the, the way the water tables and way the stormwater and everything worked, working with the watershed district. And Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty, I think I'm pretty much on the right path on that. When we had our big Zoom meeting and went through a lot of it, and the engineers have been back and forth, but that pretty much determined our bench on it. I would have loved to have held it down. I mean, if you look at, can you pull the elevation back up? Or actually, yeah, there you go. I mean, you can see how much stone is getting put on that thing to hide that whole first level. And I mean, the expense of doing that is, and I would love to have that all underground, but the way the stormwater and the water tables work now, it did not work. And it catch those, the structure, it's kind of a unique site. The cool thing is, is that you have a site that you're able to get it, like this project is able to fully utilize everything that's available to this site for all the streets that are all around it, all the stormwater, water and sewer that were all put in previously. And it's a really efficient use of the green space and, you know, getting a max density on a site that's ready to go and it's such an odd shape, you know, to chop it up and to turn it into like two office buildings or to try to turn it into some kind of strip retail, you're going to end up with a lot of odd spots. And with this site, because we were able to use so much of it, we also then were stuck, though, using, you know, the different elevations of the stormwater outlets and inlets and the way the ponds were constructed on this thing. And keep in mind, too, that some of the stuff that was done on this, you know, when this thing was first put in, that was 20-some years ago. State of Minnesota's changed a lot of rules on stormwater and everything since, so working with the new rules and the old structures and the design and tying it all together, that's what you ended up with. Long answer to a short question.
Other questions to the applicant? I think we may have some later. This is a public hearing. We ask if you wish to speak to this application. Step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple of minutes giving your thoughts on the application. Once we have heard from everybody, we will close the public hearing and it'll come back to the Planning Commission for further discussion and recommendations. So we'll open the public hearing at 7:37 PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Ken, do we have anyone online?
We do not. And as I said earlier, we did not receive any comments.
And no emails to be read in?
Abby, so we'll check. Nope.
And no emails to be read in?
Nothing.
I'll ask again, does anyone else, does anyone wish to speak to this application? Seeing no one come forward and no one online, we will close the public hearing at 7:38 PM. Commissioners, what we have before us tonight is we will need a total of five motions and we will go through them one at a time, just because that's the only way I can keep it straight. Four out of five will be recommendations to the city council. They will have the final say and then the fifth one, which is the resolution, we're the final on that. So with that, discussion, comments, concerns about the project?
I'm a little, and I understand the desire of contractors and developers to do things fast, but recently we have been getting several steps in our processes all at once. And as I'm, as I'm listening to Ken and I'm looking at our materials, there are several things where we're being asked to approve the final plan and the PUD final plan where there are still things that need to be worked out. And I grant that we often have things that have subject to this and that recommendation. But this is, it is a concern for me that we've still got things that we need to have nailed down that aren't there yet.
Is there a recognition, one of these, that you think there should be more conditions to nail down your unease?
Would be a list. So let's, I'm going to, I think the world of Ryan and I'm going to trust, going to trust in our engineer.
Further discussion or comment? Well, let's move to the first one. That would be the recommendation for the proposed PUD amendment. Questions on that particular topic? If there's no discussion or no questions, the chair is looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the city council approval of the proposed PUD amendment, number one.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Motion carries. Let's move to item number two, which is the zoning ordinance map amendment. Questions or concerns on the, excuse me, on the map amendment? Hearing none. The chair is looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to recommend to the city council approval of the proposed zoning ordinance map amendment. Duty listed.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Move to item three, which is the proposed for the final plat approval. Chair, any discussion, questions? It comes with four conditions. We're welcome to add more as needed.
Were we going to add anything about the fire or about the access points on there at all? Am I missing?
Mr. Chair. That's in number five.
This is just really designation change only, right? If I understand it right.
The final plat designation only?
The final plan.
The final plat.
Number three is just the final plat. That all the conditions, site design things are in number five.
Number three is just changing it from an outlot to block one, whatever it is.
Yes.
Any other questions? Otherwise, chair is looking for a motion?
I will make a motion to recommend to the city council for approval of the proposed final plat.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimous. Item four is approval of the Headwaters' fourth edition final PUD application or the final plan. Discussion, questions? Hearing none. Chair is looking for a motion. Chair will make a motion to recommend, the Planning Commission recommended city council approval of the Headwaters' fourth edition final PUD application. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item five is the resolution that always comes with one of these, and we are the final on this. And there are...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four with some subsections, so it's a...
It's a lengthy list.
It's not the longest one I've seen. We had one with 60-something, remember that? But it's a long one. So questions, concerns?
Mr. Chair, my concern with several of these are that they're, that they look at unknowns. Requirements related to city or future developments as identified by the city or watershed district must be satisfied. In other words, we're not done with our review and so we don't know what. Again, the cash fee in lieu of land dedication isn't solid. The project until, we've just got, there were a couple more in here that I was like, wait a minute, we haven't figured that out yet. The applicant has to revise the project site plans. They're not final yet. We don't have the easement, maintenance and access agreements, and those are things that we've usually required to have in place in the past. I understand the desire to get something going before frost. I understand that, but there are a lot of conditions on here and some things that aren't final yet.
Chair Gerard, if I might just add, I understand your, some of your concerns there. Commissioner Young, this isn't a project that's looking to be built this year. It is a project that is looking to transfer land ownership and the entitlement is a key piece in that it is pretty customary for things like easements to be worked on after planning commission approvals, but before any sort of permits are released on the property. I just wanted to note that for the record because it would not be customary for us to have all of the easement documents ready at this point for site plan approval.
We have required those in the past, but that's, I understand that that is, that is not required now.
Commissioner Young, do you see anything that should be added as a 25th condition?
My problem is that, not with specificity, and it would be unfair to the applicant, for me, to put anything here that was not a specific additional requirement. So no, sir, I don't.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. The chair is looking for a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 823231 with the subject to conditions 1 to 24 proposed by staff.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries four to one. Good luck on your project. Len, once again, welcome to Forest Lake. Welcome to Forest Lake. Maybe you want to move from Baxter down here when you're done.
Very nice.
I should have said, we're excited and love the opportunity, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Very nice plan. Well done with your design.
This will now go to the city council. They will make the final approval on all but the last one, and that will go...
September 11th.
September 11th. Our final. Good luck on your project. We'll move to item seven, which is our discussion. I'll start with, do we have Councilperson Roberts online tonight?
I have, did not see anyone online.
Okay. Then we'll just move on to our esteemed community development director, Abby.
I just have a couple of quick updates. Earlier this week, yesterday...
Earlier this week, yesterday, you received, for you and the city council received from me, multifamily residential housing analysis. There's been a lot of discussion since I've come on to the city and a lot of inquiries that have come on, since I've come on to the city, about the amount of multifamily dwelling units that have been added to Forest Lake. So, the intent of this was really to show how those have impacted the community, kind of as a whole, in considering a variety of factors. Our comprehensive plan, how it's consistent with zoning codes, our density standards and our status with our minimum dwelling units. And again, everything in our code is minimum. There's, we're not really ever at a maximum threshold. And then, kind of touching a little bit on affordable housing characteristics, we do have a number of developments, buildings within the community that are offering housing at an affordable rate. We have very little new construction that is deed restricted or restricted to have to provide that at that affordable rate. And then lastly, just where we compare as a community of our multifamily to single family compared to the metro region and the state. And so, I encourage all of you, there's hard copies for you, to take a look at that. If you haven't, reach out to me if you have any other questions.
Just a really quick one. On page two, the 2016 to 20, minimum and actuals, and the 21 to 30, minimum and actuals. For minimums and actuals, do I add those, or is that, are they standalone? In other words, for, for today, or by the year 2030, should we have 150 plus 663?
No.
Multiple family, or is that a standalone number for the 21 to 30?
Well, we'll look at, just like, 2016 to 2020. In our comp plan, we said we would need to achieve our densities. We'd need to add a minimum of 854 single-family units. We actually only built 247. We would need to add a minimum of 153 multifamily units, and we knocked it out of the park with 523. You can add in all of the minimums across the board and then compare them to adding up all the actuals across the board, but they are intended to be standalone numbers, just as a comparison. Here's what we said was our minimum. This is actually what we've built.
But, but what I s-... Okay, so, so to get how many multiple-family units we actually have today, I would add the 523 plus the 159.
That would be what had been constructed since 100, or 2016, correct?
Yes, thank you very much.
Which is what your small tabulation is below there, right? The small box? It adds it up to 682 and the 334. They add up to what those numbers above are. You just condense them down.
Any other questions? Otherwise, if you take a look at this and digest it, and it makes you think of other things, feel free to reach out. I'm happy to help provide that. I just know with the Keepers Project coming forward and the potential of other apartment complexes that have been contemplated on the Highway 61 corridor, I wanted to at least provide that for you to at least show that we're, we're still in line with what we said in the comp plan. I don't think our comp plan could have foreseen the industry standard or the rise in multifamily housing and some of the challenges with single-family development, but that's where we're at. Commissioner Steeler?
On, on page two, the same page, on the lower two tables. You have one table that says, you know, for below 30% AMI, then 31 to 50, and then 51 to 80. But then in the table at the bottom, you kind of throw in an extra column. Why?
That was just based on the Met Council's data, and I know that was very confusing to me as well. So, the Met Council, when we went through the 2040 comp planning process, they wanted, they divided out the affordable housing share for each community in the metro region, and they said, you need to have so many units at 30% AMI or less, and 31 to 50. Now, the Met Council has divided that up a little bit more, I think, to really start to look at kind of those that are at extreme need, those that might be a little bit higher need. I think it shows that, what I personally like about the additional table is it is showing that we are creating affordable housing units within the community. They're just maybe at a different threshold than some of those at that extreme 30% AMI, that extreme low-income threshold. But that was definitely provided directly from the Metropolitan Council. Something changed in their world in the last four years.
Abby, as, as we've gotten more apartment buildings, has the city development staff and the city administration considered that we are reaching the point where we probably need to have somebody doing routine inspections of apartment buildings? I know that, the folks that I know that are in some of our older apartment buildings, problems with, with maintenance, with mold, with sealed egress doors, things like that. And we really don't have anybody that they can turn to. As we get more and more apartment buildings, and as they start to get some age on them, this is going to be more of a concern. And I don't want to be one of the communities that has a tragedy, and then people say, well, why didn't you do something earlier? I like Forest Lake being a forward-looking community. And so, I'm wondering if there has been that, those thoughts.
That's a great question. There's some newer members of the commission that might not have been here or might not actively read your comp plan. There is a goal in the comp plan to create a rental registration program and inspection program. There have been just brief mentions of it. As of right now, the city isn't in a position, we don't necessarily have the resource capacity to bring on a program of that nature. It would be a fairly intensive program, or they tend to be a little intensive just in terms of having the staff resources. Maybe not necessarily a lot of money to do it, but the people to go out and actually be doing these regular routine inspections. It's not out of the, you know, it's not kicked way out into left field. I think as the next few years kind of keep progressing, I think, and the city council starts to look at where they're aligning their resources, especially if it comes down to alignment with adding more staff, be able to administer programs like that. But as of right now, no, we are not actively looking at a program.
At one point, when we hired firefighters, they were, they had dual roles. This is something that other communities have also done, that as they've moved toward, instead of just what we call volunteer or paid-on-call, having either part-time folks as firefighters staffing our area, that they would also have duty as inspections personnel. That's, that's a way that as we're having more and more trouble getting firefighters, to have them with a dual certification and a, a real living has some potential, and I'm hoping that y'all are thinking in that direction.
Well, I would encourage you to talk with your council, just about their, they have been advised many years now of all the staffing needs across the community that would really come down to the addition of, of additional staff.
We've got some brand-new folks that, that I'm hoping staff can help me to bring along.
That's quite a commitment.
Just a couple other quick updates. I want to let you know I have started to work with MSA, Professional Services, another firm that's going to assist a little bit with some planning work, specifically our zoning code update. Been here 15 months now, and I think you've heard from me at least a few times, hey, I'm going to work on that zoning code, hey, I'm going to work on that zoning code. There's a number of things that are pulling my time. So, I've asked MSA to come in and do two different things for us. One is to clean up some of our base zoning districts. So, if you've ever opened up the zoning districts for the industrial or MU2, or you sell a little bit with, when we updated the MXR, we're trying to go to that visual table format, making it just easier. We have very text-heavy code. MSA is going to not only help develop some of those tables for us, but also look at other areas of our code where we can just be visually easier. There's times when we might talk about a setback, and you can just put in a little diagram, and it explains it better than a lot of words. So, they're going to do that project for us by the end of the year. You might not have much interaction with them at all. I'll be bringing that document, those documents. Ken and I will be bringing those ordinance amendments before you. It's not changing content, it's, it's condensing it, making it visual. The other thing that MSA is going to look to do is start to look at, how is it that we can really look at developing a more modernized, streamlined code? So, in the zoning world, there's different types of zoning code. They're going to really look at not only our code, but also our comprehensive plan, our downtown plan goals, to really look at, how can we change our code to really encourage us, help us achieve our goals? As those projects kick off, I'll keep you posted. As of right now, it's just, we're just in the beginning of it. In fact, we haven't even really done any sort of initial kickoff with staff.
There an RFP or a scope?
No, it was just me in discussions, talking with them about how they could assist us with that work. It was funds that the council did dedicate for us to update the code, and it is not a complete overhaul, so it is following our professional service guidelines for having to do an RFP.
Any questions to Abby? Ken?
Nothing particular, other than we will have a meeting on September 13th. We are still looking for a Planning Commission member. As you can tell, we still have an empty chair. You know, someone that's interested, or may, may not know that they're interested, but maybe need a little encouraging, please direct them to the city and see if we can get some more assistance here on the commission.
All right, thank you. Questions to Ken? I don't know if we're going on the line. Justin?
I'm playing for me.
Susan?
Nope.
I will be absent on the 13th of September, which normally wouldn't be a big deal, but since we have a vacant seat already, maybe it is a big deal. So, I just thought I'd mention. I'll, I'll email John as well.
Thank you.
Oh, good, sir.
You're bringing us all souvenirs.
Yeah, I'll bring you souvenirs from Scotland.
Oh, I will be absent.
You all know what we want, you know?
The second meeting in September?
Second meeting in September. I'll be out of the country.
Okay.
Are you doing anything fun?
What's that?
Are you doing anything fun?
Sort of. It's a, it's a work project, yep, in the Dominican, so, yeah, it will be fun.
I have nothing else, so the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Seven.
A motion and a second, it's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for coming out in this sweltering evening and doing some nice civic duty.